I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our students, we're gonna make sure to pull the picture up, and I believe you jumped right on in. Can you introduce yourself and share what school you're from?
An elementary.
Okay.
There.
I'm Alexis.
And I attend.
And I attend.
Witson Elementary.
I attend elementary.
And I am a first grader.
And I'm a first grader.
You did an outstanding job, and I believe, do we have a second student as well?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Isabella Carr, and I attend Witson Elementary.
And I'm a first grader.
So Isabella Carr, a fourth grader, and Alexis Allen, a first grader at Witson. And Ms. Shawn Allen teaches kindergarten at Witson. Thank you for being here, and we also have our principal on at Witson as well. I'm gonna turn it back on over to, I believe, our board president to prepare to open up the meeting. Will our principal like to make a comment regarding her students? Ms. Pierce? Oh, and you might be muted, so we'll have to make sure that you're not muted.
Thank you. Yes, I would. Izzy and Lexi, I am so very proud of both of you. Thank you so much. You did an amazing job. And Mrs. Allen, thank you for your time and dedication and your time with us this evening. Girls, you did so good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pierce. My computer is updating at the moment, so I don't see the agenda. You lost yours also. Is yours coming back on?
All right, we have a few technical difficulties, and so as we have those technical difficulties and prepare to start the board meeting, we're going to jump right on in. We know that Reverend Williams is online, as well as Mrs. Lister, the board clerk, is looking at the agenda, and we'll begin, as is Ms. Cope, to read the initial opening of the board meeting. Thank you.
Can you tell me what's next on the agenda?
Motion for adoption.
Scott, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, there's a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so we're ready to vote.
My hand, please.
All those in favor?
Reverend William? Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, or is it?
Senior of the Month?
Okay, so the motion carried. Next on the agenda is school highlights. So Dr. Anderson?
School highlights is our favorite part so far. Senior of the Month, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Gray to introduce our school and our senior of the month, and then we will start the video and turn it over to our senior who's acknowledged.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson and members of the board. Tonight, we're very excited because our senior of the month is none other than Ms. Brianna Smith, and she is from Hope Street Academy. And I believe we have our principal, Mr. Noel, on. Mr. Noel, are you available?
Yes, sir, I am.
And he will take it from there.
So Brianna is Breezy, as we so affectionately call her at Hope Street. That's what she goes by. When, once you get to know her, you will call her Breezy. I know this from experience, because I made the mistake one time of not calling her Breezy, and it is the only time I will make that mistake. So we call her Breezy here. She's been at Hope Street the past two years. She's an incredibly intelligent young lady. She has a great personality and smile. She's very ambitious, but I think my favorite attribute of Breezy is her self-confidence. She's got, she's not afraid to voice her opinion, and she will stand up for what she believes in. Breezy's been at WIT this semester, where she has completed her healthcare tech program, earning her CNA and her home health aid license. And all, at the same time she's done this, she's been working thirty-plus hours a week at Dairy Queen, and I've heard a rumor that she makes the best peanut buster parfait in town. So, and I love peanut buster parfaits. So Reverend Williams, I see you laughing there.
I like them too.
Breezy, Breezy plans to attend Kansas City, Kansas Community College next fall, where she has a long-term goal of, and I know, Dr. Anderson, this is something that is dear to your heart. She wants to be a midwife and deliver babies at homes. And I know she'll be great at it. And I know we have a video of her, but before we get to the video, I do want to present Breezy. We have a Kansas City, Kansas Community College Blue Devils fleece pullover to present to Breezy today. And so I just want to congratulate Breezy. We all, we just love her. She's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Noel, and all the Hope Streeters that are watching this evening. And we're gonna start the video, then we're gonna turn it over to our senior to answer any questions from the board and to share any comments you'd like to share. We'll start with our video.
My name is Brianna Smith. I go to Hope Street Academy, and I am a senior, so twelfth grade.
Ms. Smith, Breezy, as she is affectionately known here at Hope Street. She was chosen as the Hope Street Senior of the Month because her desire, her ambition. She knows what she wants to do. She excels, and she achieves her goals.
I love the teachers here at Hope Street, all of them. They're all super lenient, nice, and they're not gonna run or like chase you down in the streets and like, oh, get this assignment done. They'll be like, do you need help on this? I see you haven't turned it in. Or they'll give you like a little extra time if you know, they see you struggling. I just, every single teacher here has their own personality, but like, it's great. And like, Hope Street wouldn't be Hope Street without the teachers.
I had Brianna in my first hour class, in a photography class. She came in calm, cool, and ready to go for the day. Right away, I could tell that she had a drive to be successful, that she would want an A in the class, and that she would earn it. If you get the chance to meet Brianna Smith, you'll see how ambitious she is. She strives to do her personal best in class and outside of class.
After graduation, I want to be either a midwife or a beautician. I've been accepted into Emporia, and I've been accepted to KC, KCC. Before I came here, I didn't know if I was gonna graduate. Didn't know if I wanted to. Now I definitely do.
Hope Street Academy Senior of the Month is in January, and you have been selected the Hope Street Academy Senior of the Month for January. Congratulations.
Wow, for real?
For real, right? Isn't that awesome?
Definitely. We find some recognition.
We are super proud of you. Breezy, you know, you know, we love you here at Hope Street. We are very proud of you, and we know that you are gonna go on to some wonderful, great things. Keep doing what you're doing, and you know, we love you.
All right, and for our senior of the month, is there any comment that you'd like to add before the board members ask you some questions? And again, congratulations. I think you're still muted, so they're gonna unmute you. There you go.
I appreciate the video. It looks really great. And I appreciate being senior of the month and being recognized by all of you and being attending this meeting. It's great.
Are we gonna open this up?
Have any questions for Breezy? Breezy, we have two retired obstetrician gynecologists in our, on our board. So the midwife piece might specifically speak to their careers, but Dr. Morrison?
Yeah, Brianna, I'm one of those obstetricians-gynecologists. Dr. Bonebrake and I delivered thousands of babies during our career. So if you have any questions about what your career path might be, you know, send me an email or send Dr. Bonebrake an email, and we'd be very happy to help you out with that. So I saw a picture. Was your, were your parents with you that I saw a picture of? Or is somebody with you today?
No, not today.
And so, Breezy, we're gonna, we're gonna ask you this question with your family. And first of all, again, he's right, that's a near and dear profession and an honorable one as well. Can you tell us about your school year a little bit this year? And, and how things are going right now, and what that looks like for you?
Well, this year has kind of been crazy with COVID and everything. Like, it's been a really big adjustment, going back and forth with online and back to school. And the teachers have been really like helpful during that. They're never really like on your case. They are always asking questions if you need help and always willing to give help at any time, even after school hours. I've loved school, and last year is this year, so that's exciting.
Again, congratulations. We are so proud of you. Mr. Noel, any final comment you want to share before we go on to our next highlight?
I just want to let Breezy know how much we really love her over here at Hope Street. It's, it's just, she's just been a pleasure to be here, and it's just, I feel honored to be able to work with her. Congratulations, Breezy. We love you. We're proud of you.
Hey, Mr. Noel.
Yes, sir.
You didn't share the location of the Dairy Queen for the peanut buster.
I've already PM'd you.
Huh?
I've already PM'd you that.
Oh, okay.
Is that, is that private? Because I wanted to know too. I don't know that, Mr. Noel. Which Dairy Queen, which Dairy Queen do you work?
I work at the one on 29th and Gage.
Okay, I know where that is, just down the hill.
Well, congratulations.
With that, congratulations again. We are so proud of you. So you'll get your gift from Mr. Noel likely tomorrow, because I understand you're at school tomorrow, and so Mr. Noel will give you your gift tomorrow. You'll get your certificate, and again, congratulations. We're all very proud of you. We have a second student that is a high school student at Topeka High to acknowledge and to celebrate. So we both have Ms. Morrissey on, but we also have our JAG amazing educator on. And I want to turn it over them, to them first, to talk a little bit about Chrisela Adams at Topeka High. We'll start off with Ms. Morrissey and turn it over to other staff, if you have her teacher, and then we'll congratulate Ms. Adams.
Dr. Mickelson, members of the board, Dr. Anderson, I am grinning from ear to ear tonight. Here's why. Six and a half years ago, this little bitty Pistol Pete arrived at Eisenhower when I was there. And I'm gonna tell you what, she was a pistol, and Chrisela can speak to that. But you knew even from the beginning, because she was in everything, drama, you name it, but she always had a passion for what was right from the very beginning. I didn't have her as an eighth grader, because I'd come to Topeka High. And when she arrived the freshman year, she still had that smile all over her face. She was still a go-getter. She had matured so much, and she walked straight up to me, and she says, I had a great eighth year, eighth grade year. I am ready to go. I want to get involved, and I am going places. And she really meant it. And I mean, day one. She has done everything you could ask a student to do at Topeka High. She came in, she got involved, she's been on the dance team. She found everything she could get involved with that was going to help her in the future. And what has been fun is she's picked tough things. She got involved in JAG. She'll speak to that, as will the JAG teachers. That's not always easy, and that demands of her. But she didn't just take the class and do that. Chrisela found ways then to pursue further. She has become the JAG president for the state of Kansas. She has competed. That can be scary. And she has taken all that passion she had as a sixth grader, that she didn't quite know what direction to head, and she has put it in all the right directions. And as I'm sure you're all well aware, she was just selected as the national winner for her speech for JAG and speaking. And you don't have to be around her long to see why. She quickly draws the attention of people in her room. She loves people. She wants to do well by people. She wants to be a lawyer, because she wants to make a difference in the world. And from the get-go, as I said, you didn't know quite how that little sixth-grade girl was gonna make this happen, but you knew that she was going to do something great. And I'm gonna tell you right now, she doesn't say when or if. She says, I will be, I will do, and she knows what she wants to do the rest of her life. And I have no doubt that we are gonna continue to hear great things about her. And Chrisela, as a challenge, I hope I live long enough to see your face up in the hall of fame at Topeka High School, because sweetheart, you are going places, and I could not be more proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. And is Ms. Canty on with us as well this evening, our JAG instructor? And if, if she is, we want to give her just a moment. And then we also know that Mr. Knapp, who is over JAG, he will share just a little bit about this recognition that she got, and what a distinguished recognition it is. Ms. Leslie Canty, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. All right, I could say a whole lot about Chrisela, but I can just give you one word that just sums her up, and that's tenacious. She says she's gonna do it, she's just gonna do it. She likes to say that I, I did something to help her, but that's not it. She was, she's a self-motivated young lady. She's like a second daughter. As a matter of fact, she's sitting in my front room, and I'm sitting over here, so that we can be all at the same time. But I love her, and I look forward to seeing what she does and where she lands.
Thank you, Ms. Leslie Canty. And then for Mr. Knapp, can you share this recognition, what it is? And if you were here, we'd be shaking Ms. Adams's hand in person. We did send the laminated article. She's already received her recognition, but can you share, Mr. Knapp, what this national recognition is? And then, Mrs. Adams, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, certainly, we are very proud of Chrisela. She has meant so much to our program. We have approximately 4,000 students, and Chrisela is a shining beacon among them. She has been a tremendous leader, but she's also been a great friend to not only the students, but the staff. I mean, her personality is infectious, and so we're gonna miss her. And I'm probably gonna cry when she leaves, but I hope she'll stick around and come back and be an active part of our alumni association. But the recognition she won, she earned, was national champion in the public speaking event of our JAG National Student Leadership Academy. Normally, that's held in Washington, DC. The students travel there. They spend four nights in DC. Because of COVID, that didn't happen this year. The competition was held virtually. Fortunately, as a junior, Chrisela qualified in an event and was able to do the DC trip her junior year. So we're really glad she didn't miss out on that part of it. But we have 1,500 programs across the country. All of those programs were eligible to have their students compete in this competition this year, because it was virtual. And of 1,500 programs that were eligible, thousands of students across the country, Chrisela Adams was our national champion. So we're very proud of her. She represented not only JAGK, but Topeka High, USD 501 in Kansas very well. So thank you very much, Chrisela. We love you. We're very proud of you. And please, please make sure you don't just go off to the bigger things and forget about us little people.
All right, there's our applause. If we were in the audience, you would have heard it even louder. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Adams, and I believe our board may have a question or two that they'd like to ask you, Ms. Adams. And again, we are so very proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. Thank you, Chuck, and thank you, Ms. Canty. And I appreciate everyone so much for recognizing me for this, for achieving. So when I first joined JAG, I was a, I was already involved within my freshman year, and I joined my sophomore year. I actually first competed when I was a sophomore in public speaking. And at first, I really didn't even want to, but I already had made the commitment to do it. So Ms. Canty was like, you have to, you've made the commitment, her and Mr. Kelly. And I decided, I was just like, you know what? I'm going to do it. And it happened to be the day before the competition. I had nothing prepared. I was just like, oh, my gosh. So I stayed after school in Ms. Canty and Mr. Kelly's room, and I started writing my speech. And not even, I don't even think it was like forty minutes, thirty minutes later, I had it finished, and I was ready to deliver it and ready to go the next day. And I just think the topics that have all like, that we've had to speak about have just always connected with me because of how much JAG has actually impacted me and a lot of other students too. Because no matter the background, no matter where you come from, no matter anything, like JAG is just like a class that helps you regardless. It helps you with your future. It helps you, oh, like far beyond high school. So I'm just like, really like glad that I got in this class. And I'm glad it has helped me so much. I've built so many things. I've built so many relationships, made so many connections. One thing about it is it teaches you, teaches you how to network. And because of JAG, I got a youth board position by the governor of Kansas, Laura Kelly. And I don't believe I would have been able to do that without being a part of this program, so.
Again, congratulations. I'm gonna try, any board members that, Ms.?
Mrs. Bulley.
Girl, I love your hair. You tell me so much about you, that you are going to do remarkable things. And I'm so sorry you lost your trip this year to Washington.
It's okay. I've actually been twice now with the JAG, and I actually went in eighth grade with, when I went to Eisenhower. But last year, it was so fun. I met so many people from all over. It was the best experience like of my life, honestly. And it was so fun to compete and meet so many people. It was really fun.
Well, it's an incredible thing what you did. I, it is so large that I'm sure you can't even hardly wrap your head around it. But it is incredible, and we are so proud of you. And thank you for bringing it back to like Topeka High. How wonderful is that? We are just so proud of what you've done. And you just keep moving forward with that tenacity and, and that sass. And we just wish you the best. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Adams, what was the title of your topic?
The title this year was, JAG Has Helped Me Be Successful. And I really, honestly, I really connected with that one, because when I joined, this like, I've just talked about how I was when I had first joined and how I am now. And not even, I know like everyone that has taught me sees how far I've come just as a person and how much I've matured as a person. And like I said, if I want something, I'm gonna go get it, no matter what, so.
Northwestern.
I don't know that she heard that totally.
Oh, Ms. Adams, have you decided on a particular law school? If you have not, I would suggest Northwestern in Chicago.
Chicago. I don't know where I'm going for law school yet, but I didn't know I want to be somewhere sunny.
It's not Chicago.
But I do know where I'm going for my undergrad, and that's gonna be the University of Kansas.
Are there any other questions for, go ahead, Ms. Stuart Campbell?
So we are so proud of you. I just love your energy and your face and you. So proud of you. And hey, I wore this mask. I have a lot of masks. I wore this one for, for you tonight. So yeah, I, how can we hear this? Is it like on YouTube or somewhere? How could we hear this? I would love to hear this, this national award-winning speech.
Actually, we have it. I actually had just recorded it at T-PAC last week, and we had posted it on Facebook. If anybody has it, I'm pretty sure they could share it if you guys want to hear it right now.
Okay, well, we could touch base with Ms. Morrissey.
We'll get it shared, I think, and then we'll all look at it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
No problem.
And as an additional piece, in terms of your speech, one of the things that our communications department will do as a surprise to you, again, you've gotten a laminated article, you've gotten the national recognition, have been in the paper, but we would like to make a video with you giving your speech on video, so we can post that on our TV station, on our YouTube, and really share some of your oratorical skills broadly. So that will be another piece of just showing it to all of Topequins as just another celebration. So they will hear it, because we'll be following up with you, so you can share it with our communications team. So we look forward to taping you in the near future, now that you're back. And again, congratulations, Ms. Morrissey. Is there any final comment you'd like to say as we close on out?
And just one question, Chrisela, that's a little off-topic, but I know you've been able to be in the building some, even while we were remote. Now we're back in school. You want to speak a little bit to what it's been like to be able to come and, and see your teachers in person as you needed, then being back with your, with your classmates this week?
Yes, I actually, so the transition from being online and being remote, it was really hard, lack of motivation and everything. And I'm always like trying to be positive as positive I can, because everybody is all new, the situation. Everybody's in the same boat. Nobody knows exactly what's going on every day. So I try to be as optimistic about the situation as possible, so, because it is as well as hard on the students as it is the teachers. But being in person is way much better, because I'm a person that like, likes to be around people, and it just helps me learn better when I'm doing in class. But honestly, the overall experience this year, I wouldn't have recommended my, for my senior year, but I mean, we're still here and we're still doing it. So, and I'm graduating here soon, three weeks, I think, yeah, about three weeks. So I'm gonna be out of here. But honestly, I wish everybody the best for their senior year and juniors, sophomores, freshmen, all of them. It might have, not have been the ideal situation, but we're still all pushing through and managing to get through it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Adams. And that'll be a good segue when we do get to the superintendent's report about the mid-year graduates and students who are graduating, moving directly into post-secondary, and the celebration for the first time that we're able to have, as they're able to come back in person at this time and have finished strong these last few weeks and prepare to graduate. Congratulations, and we're proud of you. Take care.
Congrats, Chrisela. I'm very proud of you, sweetheart. Very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
With that, that concludes our highlights with the celebration of Ms. Adams. And you all get a chance to see, and with Ms. Canty, the JAG extraordinary educator, with all of that energy. And we'll turn it back over to the board. That concludes our highlights.
Mrs. Bulley, did you have a question?
Dr. Anderson, for some people who might be listening in tonight, what is the JAG program?
There was a question about the JAG program and what is the JAG program? And Jobs for American Graduates, but Ms. Adams, would you like to say just a sentence about what the JAG program is? We have about a minute or so for you to just summarize what that is with those excellent oratorical skills.
All right, JAG stands for Jobs for America's Graduates of Kansas, and it is a program that prepares you not only in high school, but for outside, for your future endeavors. So it'll prepare you for military, trade school, and college even. So it just helps you prepare for your future and gets you, gets you there, and it helps you every step of the way.
Outstanding job. I couldn't have said it better myself. And we will be seeing you, and the communications department will be seeing you to make that video before you graduate in just a few weeks. And with that, that concludes our highlights.
One of the downsides of wearing a mask is we don't get to see her beautiful smile like that if she were in class, because she's, because Morrissey was right when she said she had a beautiful smile. So congratulations, Ms. Adams. Next on the agenda is Public Communications. I understand we have one person who sent us some communication, is that right? Ms. Lister, and you're gonna read that to us?
I have a communication to read from Mr. Richard Bolajak, 1915 Southwest Webster, Topeka, Kansas. His comments are, I have concerns that staff are now required to utilize their own sick leave for COVID-related issues, testing positive, or to be quarantined, and child-related issues. I understand how this may be a burden for the district to continue to provide the sick leave as it comes from the district's budget. The realization that staff will use ten days of sick leave for one quarantine is disturbing, as this is the entire allotment of sick leave for the school year. One or two quarantines, and staff are now in deduct. I feel that this is a huge morale issue moving through the year, as this involves employees, family... I feel that this is a huge morale issue moving through the year as this involves employees, family, income and mental well-being. I appreciate your consideration in finding a way to reinstate COVID leave as it was prior to December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lister. Next on the agenda is disposition of business by consent. Entertaining a motion to do that?
Uh, Mr. President, I move the board approve the. Items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project. And purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Stewart Campbell offers a second during discussion. I don't see any, so we're ready to vote.
The vote is open. Okay, I.
Yeah, let's.
All votes are in and the motion carried unanimously.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
At this time, uh, we uh will be talking about our COVID update and uh academic uh items related to that event. As well as information overall. So as we prepare to share that PowerPoint uh of our COVID update. I will say that Mr. Gallen, he is the one technology person. So he is getting his exercise this evening with going back and forth with board members. And so as we prepare to share that PowerPoint, I'm gonna introduce some of the individuals that are here. And uh we will begin starting off that report with our DCAC members and our DCAC members. Uh, they'll share what for those that don't know what DCAC stands for. They are all parents. Uh, and they'll be giving uh just some feedback as an update on DCAC. It's part of our academic update. Uh, they'll give a full report at the end of the year, but they're going to give that initial academic update. We'll hear from some of our teachers. I'm sorry, some of our principals. So if we go to the very next slide. Our secondary staff members that are with us this evening are Ms. Morrissey, who is still on the screen, Ms. McCoy, Mr. Hare. Uh, and we will start off with hearing from uh DCAC actually, just in case some of those parents have to transition. And then we'll come right back to our staff members. Uh, so on the very next slide where it says DCAC, we'll turn it on over to. Our DCAC officers to talk about their study topic, uh, to share some feedback and to talk about reopening experiences thus far. I believe Dr. Routsong is with us. Dr. Gruder is with us and uh Mr. Guile may be with us as well. And perhaps there are other members that they may want to introduce.
Dr. Gruder, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'm Ivan Gruder and I am the president of the District Citizens Advisory Council. Uh, we are a parent and community advisory and advocacy group for the Board of Education. And so I want to say, uh, Mr. President and members of the board, thank you very much for your willingness to receive and listen to. Parent and guardian input on some topics of importance for parents. Uh, as officers and representatives, we have been very diligent this year working in three areas. Uh, the first one is our study topic of mental health services for students amid and after a pandemic. And so I want to thank the administration and staff who have been helping us research that and also helping us prepare our research paper. And you'll hear more about that at a later time. We have also taken up the task of being advocates on behalf of parents and guardians for community-wide broadband. This is an important issue for us and for all students, especially as we are doing remote and distance learning. And the third thing that we've been doing is giving feedback as parents and guardians. And so I want to say thank you to Dr. Anderson and Dr. Gray for their many hours that they are willing to listen to us and interact with us and share information with us. We had our meeting this last Tuesday and there's more than twenty of us representing schools. And as parents, we represent a variety of schools. I have three children in the district. I have a foster child at Meadows and two senior students at Topeka High. And my wife also teaches at Loman Hill. So I will speak as a parent and I will let my wife and teacher speak on their own behalf. So I won't speak for her. Uh, the important thing that we listened to at our last meeting was about the scorecard. The data that goes into the scorecard and about information, um, making the decision to return to uh in-person learning. And I am very happy as a parent that we have this option to have in-person learning. Um, as the district numbers among students, infection and transmission has been very low and remain very low. Um, I am happy that we have this ability to have in-person or also the flexibility of having remote. Uh, there are some days that my children do remote and sometimes they're in person. And I'm very happy that we can uh have that as our option. Uh, we are going to hear from other officers, but one of the concerns of that I have is information we received. At our last report about the number of students who are becoming disengaged with their studies. Um, we have a at least a third, about a third of our students who are losing or have lost. Academic, social and their emotional connection with their education. And I think that will have long-term impact upon their education and also their careers and their lifelong learning. We hear directly from administration and also principals. So I want to applaud the principals and the staff and the teachers and every person. Who's going over and above to make sure students are connected. Um, but one of the areas of connected is activities, uh, fine arts activities and other important activities. And just also the emotional connections and the social connections that students have while they are in school. Um, as my daughter said, she was just happy to see her friends again. And that is important. And so I want to thank you for having that option to have in-person, remote and virtual education. At this time, I'm gonna call on Tracy, Dr. Tracy Routsong uh to share.
So first I want to reiterate both the huge, mongous thanks at all the work. That the teachers and administration have been doing and also the gratitude of having this face-to-face option. So my son is a senior at Topeka High School and so I'm just going to really address our perspective from from his perspective and perspective. So learning he could return to the classroom was profoundly positive in our home. So no senioritis here. Of opportunities to work with freshmen with link crew, uh, playing a real instrument instead of an imaginary one, working with real technology in a production class. So in my feeling here, as long as the TPS five oh one scorecard remains low and safe for the students and our teachers. So he and then we as his parents really want him to be in the classroom. It's where he is most successful. And I believe it's the best option for him and many of his classroom and classmates when you're considering his academic socio-emotional. And yet even safety needs. So thank you so much for continuing to provide this face-to-face option. So we did talk about engagement with DCAC and uh and the fact that it is an issue. And so one of the things that I just wanted to mention, so when the time comes for you to hear about the fine arts proposal that's coming through. I I just, I really want you to remember some of the evidence-based, research-based benefits of the fine arts. You know, students are more likely to graduate, more likely have increased attendance, decreased behavioral issues, you know, increased peer support. Uh, understanding diversity and diverse issues, increased desire to seek new information, increased academic scores in math, reading and science. Increased motor skills, problem-solving skills, which we could use, and increased feelings of accountability. I'm asking that you support the return of any and all practices and performances for any of the fine arts groups that the principals and the directors can deem safe. As quickly as possible. So for us, my son's in bad band, jazz band drum line, and he's done some theater. And all of them have missed significant opportunities, uh, simply because the policies haven't been quite versatile enough. Uh, so you know, as we know, so example, our band played once with an audience after waiting on specialty PPE. Uh, our jazz band has yet to play, even though they have less than twenty-five members, a stage that can accommodate over a hundred fifty students in an auditorium that can fit over twelve hundred. Uh, so even when it wasn't in red, uh, because of policy drum line, who all can wear masks and all can socially distance. Didn't get to play most of the fall season. They had three practices. Uh, this isn't the fault of the directors, but this concept of blanket policy. So I'm asking for you to consider adopting a policy that allows the principals. And the directors to adapt guidelines quickly based on the most current safety information when approached with special opportunities. So encourage creativity and make it clear that all guidelines and policies should match other extracurriculars so that there's equity for all. Uh, please support and encourage all of the extracurriculars, similar to what Dr. Gruder was saying. Trust the principals and knowing how they should be able to stay safe and continue, whether it's forensic, scholars, swimming, bowling, tennis. And yes, the fine arts. So without these opportunities, I think we're going to continue to lose students. And at this point in time, I'm pretty sure I think Sean is with us and I think he was going to close us out.
Dr. Routsong, some don't all know what DCAC is and is there uh the officers, it's one group. But um, is there a representative at various schools or do you all just represent the the schools that um all the district with just the schools that you're at?
Oh, I I apologize. District Citizens Advisory Council. So the goal is to have representation at all schools for five oh one. We currently, um, Dr. Gruder, you might know better than I do. Uh, we've done much better with this and their in the recruitment and having parent representation. If people are interested in participating, they can certainly get ahold of us. Uh, but the goal is to have representation from as many of the five oh one schools as possible. We also have some community members that participate as well.
Thank you.
Can I put a link in the uh chat on how people can find out more about DCAC and also how to volunteer?
Thank you. Are there any other comments that you'd like to make before we go back to our principals and they're gonna talk a little bit about reopening? I'm sorry, Mr. Guile?
Yes, Dr. Anderson, I I do. I just want to commend the the administration and the teachers for their flexibility. And and talk about the importance of the the in-person time, the the mental stability that it has brought for my daughter. Um, when she found out that she was going to be able to go in for a thirty-minute session one Wednesday in December. That raised the the roof on our home for several days and the return back has been good. You know, she talks about the the efforts that the teachers make and the efforts that the students make when they go into the buildings and stay in the facilities. The biggest thing that I hear from her and that I see is that that involvement, that organic involvement that happens in the classroom, in the hallways. And the extracurricular and co-curricular items are what are keeping her engaged. And I think that was one of the most disturbing statistics that we were given at our meeting this week was the chronic absenteeism. And disengagement and. What I am hearing from my student is. Seeing her friends face-to-face and seeing her teachers face-to-face. Picking up the instrument or getting out on the court. Those are the things that are keeping her engaged. So. We need to keep going. I also would echo Dr. Routsong's comments about providing flexibility to the administration. That when there are opportunities for those performances or rehearsals or competitions to happen in a safe manner. That they be allowed to do that quickly and responsively. So thank you, members of the board, members of the administration.
And may I also add that I'm very thankful that um my children have five oh four plans, at least one does. And I was happy that he was able to go to school and get direct support and interaction uh with social workers and with staff. And with teachers who could help him. So for students who have special needs or accommodations in person is very important. So thank you.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Gruder and Dr. Routsong and Mr. Guiles. Uh, with the fine arts piece, we'll be getting coming to that a little bit later in the report as we give the academic update. Uh, as we go back to our principals, uh, which is a slide right before DCAC. You know, we always like for you to hear directly from principals. We're gonna uh ask for a stop at the end of that slide and see if there are any questions for our principals. And then we're going to turn it over to our teaching and learning department. Uh, for the secondary staff, we have three uh several principals that are on with us this evening. But our uh secondary staff, uh, the high school principal uh that I believe will be speaking this evening, Ms. Morrissey. And then we'll just go straight to Ms. McCoy and Mr. Hare. Any updates you'd like to give on academic updates related to uh returning to school? Normally we'd be giving the opening of school related to back to the new year, but uh for back for in-person learning new year. Would you like to give any updates, Ms. Morrissey?
Absolutely. Uh, I do want to say thank you. I know last week when I learned that, well, I guess it was last week. It seems like a long week. When I learned we were coming back in person, I had a smile on my face as well. But Monday morning at seven fifteen, I'm at Western and I can tell you as kids hit that door and staff hits that door, there were smiles on people's faces. Uh, they came right in. They did their temperature. They used the hand sanitizer. They went straight to the cafeteria to their first hour class. It it was as if we had been out seven weeks. It was a very seamless transition back to the building. Uh, walking around, students followed the protocols. Uh, they were using the shields. They had their masks on. Teachers were up and teaching and maintaining space with their masks on. It was just fun to see it happen and to see it happen safely. But I think the fact that it just felt alive again, there's just a feeling when kids are in the building that is different. And I think the parents have spoke eloquently to the fact that that is just something that cannot be replicated, no matter how hard our staff tries. Through a remote setting when you're looking at students on computer screens. Uh, staffing-wise for us, it's been really amazing. We came back. I did have two situations where I had long-term staff out. Uh, because of nothing to do with COVID, but I have not had one other positive person. I have a staff of two hundred and fifteen in my building, almost a hundred and fifty certified staff and a hundred and nine classroom teachers. I have not had one teacher have to miss class uh so far. Anywhere that somebody stepped away, it's only been for maybe a period, somebody covered because of an appointment. And that has continued all week. Academically, we have talked a great deal about how we help kids recover again. One of the positives when we moved from remote to in-person before was we began to help our students recover. We still have about a seven percent greater number of Fs than we had last year at approximately the same time and we want to help students recover. Uh, we are simply able to do that better when we can get them into the building. What's great about this is we still are providing options. We've had about fifteen kids or so per division of our four divisions. Whose families, although they were actually in the hybrid prior, have chosen to remain in the remote setting for a little longer right now. So they have that option and can do that. But for those that really need to be in the building and feel comfortable doing that, it has been really valuable for them. And I know you already heard from the families about how they feel about being back, but I want to say one more thing. Both my staff, because a couple of teachers who have chosen are not classroom teachers, but a couple of my staff. Has chosen to stay away, even though they didn't have to, just to be cautious. But what's happened is my families have done that in huge numbers. So they will call us and if they have children. Who have been around someone who is sick and not even positive yet, they're choosing to exercise the remote option. Until they know for sure that they have or have not been exposed. And I just want to emphasize that all of our stakeholders, our staff, our parents, our students. Um, our administration have really been conscientious about doing everything they can to protect one another. I think that's a large part of the reason that our community scorecard for our district community rather than Shawnee County is much lower. Because they do feel like that our stakeholders are really exercising tremendous responsibility for each other and I greatly appreciate that. So thank you for the option. I think it's been wonderful being back in the building.
Ms. McCoy, thank you, Ms. Morrissey.
Yes, good afternoon. Well, afternoon. Gosh, it feels like afternoon. I am in a parking lot of uh Dylan's right now. Because I'm gonna go get my staff and my students some treats because Friday is an exciting day. It's been a really exciting week. Our kids have been just ecstatic to be back. And I was telling Dr. Hackett today. One of my kids who his mask fell below his nose and one of his friends looked over and goes, do you want to go back into remote? Get your mask up. So it's good to see kids even taking that social responsibility for each other. Um, they are ecstatic to be back in the building. I have heard nothing but great and positive things from parents. I made some phone calls today to parents. Just to make sure that, you know, if kids weren't on or weren't attending, what's going on? How can we help? Did they have internet? Can we get them a ride to the building, you know? Um, but they are just so excited that their kids are back and learning. Um, our staff, just the same exact way. They are ecstatic to see kids. Like it just rejuvenates you as a as a teacher and as an educator because that is why we're here. And seeing them on a screen isn't necessarily why we do this and we just love seeing them in person and interacting with them. So it's been a real exciting week and like I said, I'm off to go buy some treats for those for those young kids and definitely for my teachers. Because gosh, it's been a long road and man, we are just excited to be back in person. So again, thank you so much for reopening and making sure that um our students have the ability to learn in person. Because I think we all know that that's where they learn the best and those relationships that we build with them are just immeasurable. So uh, that's how it's going over at Cap City. We absolutely are happy over there.
And for the final uh four or five minutes, uh, Mr. Hare, did you would, thank you, uh, Real McCoy. Uh, Mr. Hare, uh, would you like to make a comment about the reopening on behalf of middle school as they have also met this week? And on behalf of your own school and then we'll go straight to elementary and stop for any questions about first day of school from board members?
You bet. Thank you all for having me here. Uh, good evening. Um, you know, at middle school, you know, the biggest rewards that we continue to talk about with teachers. Is actually what has been missing this entire time, the last seven weeks, and that's kids. And that's, you know, the awkward middle school A's that often scares people away from middle school is exactly what our reward is. Seeing those kids and staff has been super excited and to have kids back in on campus. Cause that's really why we're here, having those kids and the relationships that you make online and in person are a little bit different. And uh, they are so lucky and happy to have them back, just like kids. and they are so lucky and happy to have them back, just like kids. For the first time, some of our kids came back for the first time since last March, just this week, because their parents trust us and decided us to take care of their kids. And being away that long, kids were super excited to be back. They come in happy. They miss relationships. They miss adults. They just miss the feel of school. And so, that's exciting. I even had a parent call me this week and say, "You know, Mr. Hare, I know that the return, that we can choose to come back is not for a couple of weeks, and it's not what I want. My daughter says it's what's best for her, for her to come back." And so, the mom left it up to her daughter's own decision-making, and we made it happen the very next day, because we knew it was important for the family, important for this girl, who hasn't been here since March, to be able to come back. And she was super excited. And now I even have kids who, we have remote on Wednesday, and I had a couple of kids that emailed me like 8:30 at night on Tuesday night that says, "Is there any way that I can just come tomorrow? I know we're supposed to be remote, but I just need to be in school where I can be focused and where I can just have time just to think about what I need to do." So, those, you know, those are reassuring of why we are doing what we're doing. And just like my colleague said, you know, we, at middle school and all grade levels, you know, we always, we always think kids know how to behave and that kind of thing. So, you know, for years and years, every three-day weekend, every holiday, we always tell teachers, "Take time, teach expectations. They're going to forget," you know, those kinds of things. And our kids came back, and we didn't have to do much at all. They just came through the doors, they followed protocols, they wear their mask. And I'm going to be honest with you, even when we're on site, I have not used my in-school suspension room at all this year for anything. Our kids are just so mature, and they are really just stepping up to the challenge, because I think they really see the importance of school. And so, you know, I have a ton of kids who did come back at Christmas break. Did I have a few that went remote at Christmas break? Sure. You know, that is the beauty of the platform that we are providing for our families, is choice. And each family can choose what's best. But, you know, we can continue to tell parents that remote or in-school, you're going to get a great education, because really, it's the seat that changes. You're still having a live teacher, you're still in those classes. But we are finding that kids want to be back, and parents are bringing their kids back more and more. So, we are just, we've had a great week. It's just been super, and we're excited, teachers excited. And like my colleagues, I'm just going to make a remark that my staff attendance in my 11 years at Dardoy Middle School has never been this high. I do not have staff that miss. They just come to school, and they, you know, they don't miss this year. And it's rare that I have a staff member gone, or just one gone, but their staff attendance is so much higher than this year. You know, and the other comment with, you know, my student attendance has been great all year long, anyway. We've been doing a good job to hunt kids down and making sure they're on and calling, helping those parents out to go to work. But the joy of this week is my attendance is even higher, and what's better is the student engagement is higher. And student engagement in class is going, in school is, for most of our kids, is going to get better results when it comes to mastery of standards and just quality of work and things like that. So, we are excited that we have this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. And Ms. Hoffman would have been here in place of Mr. Hare or with Mr. Hare, but she has a PTO meeting that is occurring as we speak. Again, thank you. And thank you for serving over the weekends, over the weekends while we've been in remote as a mobile pantry. Our elementary staff members, again, first day of school again. So, Mrs. Broyles, Ms. Martin, and Mrs. Pierce. And I believe we have to make sure we're just unmuting you as you get ready to share. And then at the conclusion of those, it'll be just at the time of transitioning to our PowerPoint for the remainder of this time from teaching and learning, Ms. Sharp and Dr. Hackett. So, Ms. Broyles is at Shana, our early childhood. And if you can share her, our little biddies got started, and we saw you on the video that you were on this week, but you can share a little bit about your first day or first several days.
Got it. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Hello, board. It's good to see everybody. Mrs. Sharp, thank you for this opportunity. Anybody knows that if we can talk about early childhood, I'm eager to do so. So, we had a lot of excited faces from staff, ready to greet students. You know, everybody's just ready for the comfort that comes from being together. And that's probably something that we haven't talked a lot about pandemic is comfort, because everything has been uncomfortable. But I will tell you, within the walls at Shana and the teamwork that's there, the camaraderie, the hard work from staff, the security that students have by being somewhere that's safe and being around people that love them, that brings comfort. And that's what I've seen for the past four days, and it is truly something that brings joy to your heart. I have said over and over that when students aren't there and staff aren't there, it's a building. And it's a building that makes me sad, you know. I'm there for the kids and for the students. And so, when I was thinking about tonight, I was thinking, there's two things that I want to share. And those two things are actually comments from two students. One of those is a four-year-old boy. I actually greet families every morning before the pandemic hit. That's just something that I think is important. And so, I open the car door, and I say the young man's name, and I tell him how excited I am, and I've missed him. And he hops out of his big truck, and he looks at me, and he says, "I know what I'm doing, Mrs. Broyles. I'm ready." And he walked on by. So, it was like he didn't even need me. Three cars later, I open another car door, and a child gets out and literally puts his hands up in the air and says, "My dreams have come true." Four years old. So, of course, anybody that knows me knows that I'm mushy and I'm emotional, and I did. I just thought, wow, he just said it. The dreams of these little kids right now are to be with those that keep them safe and that encourage them, and that's school staff. So, we've really looked at this as, you know, a window of opportunity to be able to physically connect with our students, to really pour into them social emotionally, to check in. It's a time where we can do some intensive intervention and really look at the academic portion that we need to do. And so, we're blessed, whether it's four days, four weeks, or four months, we're going to look at it as important time with them, and it has been amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, first week of school.
Yes, good evening, Dr. Anderson and board. It's good to be here. We, like my colleagues, had an amazing transition back into in-person learning. It was just like they said, as if we had never left. The students came in wearing their masks, following the protocols. It was very smooth. Teachers and students were doing just exactly what they needed to do to be safe within our building. And the joy was definitely felt by everyone to have all of the students back in their seats. We found that if students were lagging or missing work, if they had fallen behind during the remote learning, they've already been identified, and those teachers and that staff is working to fill those gaps during the time that we have them here. As always, there's a sense of urgency to take advantage of this in-person time and use it as an opportunity to connect with our students and meet their needs, whatever those may be during this time. Our mental health team did an amazing job during remote, reaching out to students and families. You know, teachers helped identify families that had specific needs, and they worked so hard to meet those needs. I'm incredibly proud of that team, and they are continuing to do that during this in-person time to wrap up and meet the needs of students, just as we did in remote. We're doing that in person. We said, Randolph said at the beginning of this, that no matter what learning mode we're in, we're going to do it well. There is no, we just need to get through this time. There is a sense of urgency, and at Randolph, we are doing that. We are doing remote well, and we are doing in-person well. And I'm incredibly proud of our Randolph team and my TPS colleagues as well.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. And our final principal, Ms. Pierce, if you'd like to add any final comment on your first week of school, we'll turn it over to board members to have if they have questions. We do have a PowerPoint to go through some academic updates for first semester and going into the second semester, and then we'll turn it back over to our board. Ms. Pierce, do you have any final comment you'd like to add? Your first week of school back, how has it been?
Dr. Anderson, Mr. President, and the board, it has been, like all of my colleagues have said, wonderful. Much like Mrs. Broyles said, I have a couple of comments from kiddos. But I remember Sunday night going into Monday, just getting those butterflies in my stomach again and driving to school around 7:00 on Monday, and I just couldn't, like, I was so excited to get here and see the kids jump out of the car. And one of my kindergartners got out of the car and opened up her arms and said, "I've been waiting for this day." And I said, "Me too." And so, just the eagerness and the bright eyes and the smiles from my staff, from the students. The staff in my memo on Monday was, "I know you all are going to want to hug and get together and do all of that, but please stay social-distanced and wear your masks." But I know the excitement is there, and everyone was down in the hallways greeting the kids. I think it's really been wonderful to see the students that really do thrive in-person versus remote coming back and just immediately getting on top of their studies, turning in maybe missing work or assignments that hadn't been completed. I mean, just in that first day, that's all it took. And so, that was very encouraging as well. And then, again, the opportunity to connect with families around the issue of social, emotional health and mental health. We have a very strong team at Whitson, and we connect with our families quite a bit on that area. And just even this week, being able to touch base with families with a couple of situations that they needed help with and knowing that we're always just a phone call and an email away, but now we've been able to in-person connect with them at pickup and drop-off. Things have been seamless, not one kid without a mask Monday morning. I know my colleagues have all said that, but just coming back, knowing exactly what to do. And I think the lunchroom, while we're socially-distanced and following all of our safety protocols, has been my absolute favorite, because I get to see every child in this building, and I was really missing that. And the kids, they're just happy, and I get to see them without their masks because they're eating. And that by itself, like we talked about earlier, getting to see their smiles. And so, I think everyone has, you know, echoed all of those thoughts, but it's been a great week to be a Whitson Warrior. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, in August, when we start the school year, we have perhaps two parents or two staff members at each level. We know that as we start at this particular time, many of our principals have joined the session today. Many wanted to speak. We certainly cannot have 30 principals speak, but that is the reason why we have selected one person for every level, and certainly for elementary, since it represents the majority of our schools, three principals. So, thank you for sharing your first week. If board members would like to ask questions at this time, we'll stop for that. If not, if you'd like to wait to the end, we do have some academic updates, and then we can open it up. I'll turn it over to our board president.
Are there any questions for principals? Dr. Morrison?
I want to thank you guys for coming forward and talking about how good you feel about it and really following the mitigation procedures that are keeping spread down in the schools. But I've had some negative emails. I mean, and they're in double digits, and they're from teachers who, and, you know, it's still double digits, and so, we've got 2,000, 3,000 others, but they're afraid to come into school. So, I just wonder, and some of them didn't even tell me the school, but how can you reassure those teachers that you're doing everything possible to keep from the virus spreading? I mean, I do realize that those teachers are responsible in the county, going out to places and wearing masks and keeping social distance and washing hands and all that. But they are concerned about going in and teaching. So, I just think that if any teacher would come to you guys, being reassuring them that we're doing everything possible and that we are not seeing spread at this point in the schools. So, I want you to know that. I just think that's important.
So, the question is, how can you reassure teachers at this time in your own building? At the high school, Ms. Morrissey, would you like to take that question, or someone else? And then at the elementary, whichever person would like to jump one in, feel free. And we, in the interest of time, we'd ask for just one principal to speak to that, unless there's something, someone specific you wanted to direct that to, Ms.?
I'm happy to answer that. Yep. Dr. Morrison, I know I meet with my teachers and staff. I had collaboration meetings yesterday, and I talked at great length about the difference between the community scorecard and our own district scorecard and what's going on in our schools. I certainly work individually. I have had one staff member all this week who came in, they work in a tighter office space, it's not a classroom teacher, and have a situation where they had some concerns. We were able to relocate that person. She's going to have a grandchild, and she wanted to make sure she didn't put herself at risk before she went to help her family. And so, we kind of adapted so that she felt safer working with students and having more space. So, I think we've done things like that. Certainly, I think the explanations and looking at it and talking about mitigation, about how to maintain those distances, and just reminding teachers, if students aren't following, we've had no situations this week, no discipline that I'm aware of regarding the things that we're supposed to be doing, that they should send a student immediately or call for us immediately, because we aren't going to have students in the building who aren't letting us be safe. But that hasn't been my experience so far. Our students are doing what we asked them to do.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. On the elementary end, an answer to that question, and I don't know that we'll be asking a principal at every level for every question, but is there an elementary principal that'd like to answer that question of how you reassure your staff at this time?
I will speak to that. I will say that, you know, we do a really good job of making sure that staff know what protocols need to be in place in order to be safe, and then just, you know, broken record with our students that this is what we need to do to be here and to be safe. And I will say, just as Ms. Morrissey said, that we see that students and staff are following the protocols. And I do understand that people have a healthy fear, as I believe they should, of the virus. But I think that what we're doing and the district leaders who have given us guidance and protocols and put those in place, we do see that they're working and keeping us safe. And I would just reassure teachers that I know that myself and my colleagues have their interests at heart, that we care about our staff and our students, and we want them to be safe. And that is why we're enforcing those protocols at every level.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Just briefly, just to reiterate Dr. Morrison's concerns, I think, not to speak for my colleagues, but our concerns that we're hearing are some fears from our teachers, and that's our biggest concern. We think it, we know it affects older citizens more than it does our students. Then also, our responsibility to our community, keep the spread low. And so, that's the dilemma we have, is we hear clearly the benefits of having kids in school, but we also know that there are potential risks with that. So, we're just trying to balance that. But we appreciate your efforts to keep our students and the community safe and our teachers as well. So, thank you.
As we move into this next page of the academic update, we do want to share, and thank you all for being here, and I believe they're staying to the end of that, and several other principals are here as well. If any board member has a question for a specific school, just mention the school, and they may well be here, and if not, someone else can speak to it. One of the items we do want to share that we have, we understand that right after a holiday, there is at times a bump in the number of cases based on gatherings that have occurred during the holiday. We also understand the projection nationally and locally has been that it's possible that the end of January and throughout February, we may see ongoing cases in hospitals in a manner and throughout the community, and the spread may be such that it is possible that the end of January and throughout February that we will continue to be red. If that is the case, that there will be months in which we are red, we know that the State Department has adjusted their rating scale so that students, certainly at the early levels, would be able to continue to access school during that time, because it is, again, possible that in January and February that we will continue to see red ratings. If we had not opened at the beginning of the year, it is certainly If we uh had not opened at the beginning of the year, uh it is uh certainly um imaginable that we would have remained out January and February as well, given the possibility of being red all of those months, if that forecast is accurate. Since we are all dealing with some uncertainty of what the virus will do, uh, the lowest time at for us in Topeka Public Schools in our internal card, which we will pull up, is the this week. And uh, when we've started, it is the lowest time possibly that uh we might see ratings uh over the course of the winter. Therefore, the window of opportunity this week and next week allows for students who've been out for six to eight weeks to have a touchstone with their teacher, their principal. If they've had any uh matter over the break that requires social emotional support, it allows for them to have that in person. We, next week, will be giving out our um instructional toolkits, seven thousand of them, to replenish those so that we are prepared that if we remain uh in a red rating for an extended period of time and uh also see community spread within our school, we could uh transition to that and remain in a remote state uh for an extended time uh and potentially up to spring break. But we, at this time, having been out six to eight weeks, would not have been um as prepared to remain remote through spring break if we had not opened at some point. So the point in which we are on the next slide right now, uh as you see nineteen um students and twenty-one staff for that week through January the first, that was our numbers in terms of positive cases. That is uh potentially uh one of the lower points in January in which we felt we could open at that time if we're going to open at all prior to spring break. Uh, we know that the Health Department has recommended a two-week time period of monitoring as well. And if it is uh in uh alignment with what we've seen in the past, we expect again a higher number potentially uh of cases uh at the beginning of January. But we also are listening to the forecast of the possibility of seeing red ratings throughout. We do want to share that the State Department has adjusted their ratings so that uh schools uh they're suggesting, based on the best health information they know at this time, that it is um recommended to be open in red for elementary students. Uh, and the State Department has a higher number of positive cases uh in which um could come into um uh a a higher rating of community spread uh to consider before you actually consider a a red rating. So that's part of our um review. We are each week meeting with the Shawnee County Health Department every Wednesday. Our um health coordinator, Mrs. Vatter, is also uh meeting with myself and our operational staff. And then we are checking in with our principal's leadership team and of course, calling every board member prior to making a decision. So when you heard the window of opportunity, the window, uh as far as we are concerned, uh includes uh allowing the students who've been out six to eight weeks since mid-November to uh return the first part of January, when we have nineteen students and twenty-one staff positive at that time outside of school, to return, uh replenish materials, get social emotional support. Uh, we will monitor the scorecard uh through next week. That will take us through the Martin Luther King uh holiday. Uh, and we may monitor at that time and see uh if the community spread has impact on our staffing ability. I will tell our parents and our board and our students, we want to serve students in person. We may not be able to the entire months of January and February. That may be reality, but we want to try. Therefore, this is the timeframe that we see uh is the best opportunity to try just in case we actually are red throughout the rest of these two months. Uh, so I want to share that process as we go into this uh PowerPoint. Uh, we have just about five slides to show, then we're going to stop and oh, uh, answer questions. Um, our uh scorecard, just as a reminder, uh on our website has in the past and continues to say that administration has uh reserves a right to move between phases based on updated Health Department guidance. The Health Department guidance in October changed in November. It changed in December. And it is now, uh, we now have new guidance even for quarantine. The K S D E guidance in October changed as well in November and December, where at one point they shared that they were suggesting remote only when the county was red. And now they are suggesting that we reopen. So as those guidance levels have changed, our scorecard has said and continues to say that we will open uh or reserve the right to open uh when we can. Currently, our teaching and learning uh uh timeframe for um parent conferences and the semester, I will turn over to Ms. Billy Wallace to begin that conversation and we will do a little bit of tag teaming here.
Good evening. Um, as part of the academic update, I'd like to share some upcoming dates with you. Um, the end of the semester is ending here in a few weeks on January twenty-ninth. Um, the second semester will start um the following Monday, February first. Um, and then third quarter uh will end March thirty-first. Uh, report cards uh will be posted in Tyler on February eighth. And then we have parent-teacher conferences um the third week of February, February seventeenth and eighteenth. And then um as we talked about fine arts previously, um at the last board meeting, we made a few adjustments um for outdoor events to take place for orchestra and jump and drumline ensembles um with permission from the teacher, the principal, um and the fine arts coordinator. Um, as we have received some feedback, um we wanted to share that we are um open to adjustments, if that's what the board uh would like. District administration supports allowing teachers um to have uh make requests and principals to grant those for outdoor events if it's in alignment with the Shawnee County Health Department's guidance and using all of the safety protocols.
Uh, we're going to go back to that slide for just a moment. Uh, D C A C uh referenced uh fine arts. Uh, the approval previously, as Ms. Wallace has mentioned, has been to allow for those outdoor events for orchestra and drumline. The D C A C families have asked uh about outdoor events. If a teacher uh would like to have an outdoor event and a principal approves it, uh that uh if it is, again, within alignment, as Ms. Wallace mentioned, uh with the health guidelines, that we allow for that to happen case by case. So for example, a student might uh have, uh, one student may want to do an outdoor event uh or a performance uh at, I believe, the Zulites had uh caroling and there was a distance away from others and someone wanted to, a teacher wanted to take a student or some students to that. Under the prior policy, that would have been denied, uh and in fact was. And so the request is that if a teacher makes a request, that's within the uh county health guidelines and the safety measures and the principal would like to approve that, that it is allowable. That's what they would like to see. So just want to highlight that uh as we go to the next slide.
Okay. So um, one of the things we will look at um during discussion tonight is uh the teaching and learning district calendar. So um, a committee has met this fall. It's comprised of teachers. Um, this year, we added classified staff, um K N E A representation, uh parents, administrators, and board members participate. And there are some basic uh parameters in which we uh work. And that is a hundred and ninety days uh total in our calendar. And then the breakdown um is a hundred and seventy-three point five instructional days, five point five teacher planning and prep days, seven professional development days, and four teacher, uh parent-teacher conference days. And then um one adjustment is that holidays are aligned to the Board of Regents' calendar. And in the past, um universities in Kansas have had varied calendars. Um, but just as we uh closed our voting on our calendar, the Board of Regents um communicated that they had determined that for uh the spring of twenty-twenty-two, they would start having a unified spring break. And so that shifted our spring break in our proposed calendar back one week. Um, otherwise, our our holidays are aligned to the universities.
The next slide, uh as we kind of tag-team this piece, there are two pieces. One is Option Week. Option Week uh was, is recommended at this time to be delayed until fourth quarter. It would have been next week, but you may remember that the very first Option Week, students came back only a couple of days in November and then we went um to remote. So the first group of students that selected to return have not actually had the full experience to return in person yet. And we'd like to have the stable grouping with those students and those teachers that were hired for those students first. And then there would not be another Option Week offered to until fourth quarter. Uh, the other items that we just want to remind you of is that we are continuing to monitor pass and fail rates. Our before and after-school programs have started and Mrs. Wallace can share where many of those are at the end, if you have questions. Uh, our A C T test is occurring February twenty-third. Uh, the district-sponsored, uh, I'm sorry, K S D sponsored test will be occurring. And uh, Ms. Wallace's team is funding the district A C T boot camp uh for anyone that would like tutoring as we are in person. Uh, and that will also be starting. We'll be doing some of that remote, but it's um for A C T testing. Uh, we're trying to do as much of that in person because that's how the test is actually given in person.
Okay, we are really excited. Um, we are getting ready to uh deploy. It's actually seven thousand at the elementary and three thousand more at middle school um remote learning toolkits for our students.
And now Ms. Sharp is with us, who will be talking about the remaining part of the elementary academic update.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Wallace. Um, Ms. Wallace is proud to share about um those remote remote learning kits that her team has worked really hard on earlier in the fall. We deployed seven thousand grade-level-specific kits and um over break, they were working on preparing um and getting ready to uh create another seven thousand kits. So that will support our students and teachers in remote learning with reading, math, uh, science instruction. Um, as we've been um in remote and in person, our um early childhood and elementary teachers have done an amazing job of continuing formative assessments so that um they can be very purposeful with their instructional time. Um, they've been using Mastery Connect. Um, any teacher-created assessments, they've been pulling small groups, steering Zoom, um and being creative with some small group and individual instruction while we're in person as well. Um, at the pre-K level, we were able to continue with our Myagdees um assessments for the fall. And we are getting ready to have another uh Myagdees session um in January. We were really proud of our Parents' Teachers Program. Um, Ms. Nicole Fairley um and her parent educators applied for a technology grant where they were able to secure devices and internet access for our families so that we can continue that home consultation program. And they've provided um forty-two laptops at this point and have um provided internet access for ten of their families. Um, we have had an amazing crew of elementary and early childhood teachers that have worked tirelessly since the spring, um creating amazing amazing video lessons and planning templates that all of our staff have been able to utilize. That is all available for our families on the district website as well as our cable TV channel, um giving another outlet and opportunity for our students and families to access the instruction um that our amazing teachers are providing. Um, as Dr. Anderson mentioned earlier, we do have before and after-school programs occurring um particularly at the elementary level, um providing some after-school tutoring. Principals have been um working with teachers to explore ways to um think outside of the box and um reach more of our students. Um, Topeka Public Schools has also been, I'm excited about, our new elementary virtual program. Um, this year, we were able to extend that to fourth and fifth grade. Um, Dr. Malone and Ms. Risley have done an amazing job of supporting families and um getting that program up and running. So as you can see, lots of um positive instructional um items at the elementary and early childhood level.
Thank you. The final slide is from Dr. Hackett.
Yes, we are excited. We had all uh high school students, I mean, all high schools had representative students who participated in the National Test Day. Uh, multiple students earned a composite score of thirty or higher on the A C T. That's very exciting and certainly something to celebrate. Twenty percent of our freshman um test takers for the pre-A C T earned a composite score of twenty or higher for the future A C T to be taken as a junior or a senior. And as mentioned earlier, uh, Mrs. Wallace is working with all of our high schools to support uh preparation programs so our students have the best possible opportunity to be successful on their A C T. We recently met with um at the Superintendent's Advisory Council and uh they agreed that a mid-year graduation offering would be well-received by the students who have indeed earned those credits and can graduate at mid-year. Uh, Dr. Kip sent out some information to parents just to make sure we know how many. But the principals and the counselors are working with students and families. And we would anticipate um anywhere from five to twenty-five per school who are interested in in taking part in um a mid-year graduation ceremony. Now, those students are also most welcome and encouraged to come back and and be a part of the May twenty-second graduation ceremony. But we would like to thank them for the, for their commitment as students, as scholars in the Topeka Public Schools, even right now. Um, middle school graduation is scheduled for June fourth to twenty-twenty-one. And college prep promotion will be outdoors May twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-one. Um, it's hard to believe that we're talking about that, but in a blink of an eye, we'll be at the end of the year celebrating uh this academic year. I have Dr. Morell, um, who's online, and he'll talk to you a little bit about T-Calc because we have some exciting things happening there as well. Dr. Morell?
I think we may need to make sure he's unmuted. I'll just mention those two items. Our C N A course has been added to T-Calc. Those students start on Monday. And uh, Dr. Morell has arranged for Stormont to have paid internships at Stormont for T-Calc scholars. It'll be the first time they have paid internship, so they were excited to get back in the building. Dr. Morell, is there anything you would like to add, sir?
Yes, just uh, I wanted to talk about the fact that we're going to have forty-four students in our C N A course that starts on Mondays. So we'll have two sessions, an A M. session and afternoon session, twenty-two students in each session right now. So really excited about that. With the money that we were able to get through the Spark Monday through Shawnee County, we were able to build a new healthcare simulation lab at T-Calc. So the students will be working with brand-new equipment. The instructors will be coming from Washburn Tech, so the students will be getting college credit. And they'll be able to sit for the Certified Nurse in Home Healthcare Aid uh licensing exam. So great opportunity for our students. With the paid internships, the students had to undergo the pre-employment screening for any uh Stormont Vale employee. They had to undergo the employee training and they're going to be paid fifteen dollars an hour. Really excited about that. They'll be rotating among the Ro, uh, the Stormont Vale departments, various departments. And they'll each have a mentor through their time at the hospital. So great opportunities for our students. Really excited about the partnerships. And I think there'll be a press release coming out in the next couple of days that we'll talk more about that.
Thank you for your doing, Dr. Morell. So the concluding comment, that was the final slide, and we'll open this up for questions. We also would like to know if the board would be uh comfortable with us allowing that if a teacher has a request for a um outdoor experience, that's a fine arts teacher, that's in alignment with the county health department. that's a fine arts teacher, that's in alignment with the county health department guidelines and the principal approves it. If that teacher can proceed, we'd like to ask if you would like to make that adjustment. And if not, we will continue with the recommendation that has been previously provided and proceed accordingly. The final comment that we'd like to make, and this is the reality that we're dealing with as we conclude that final slide. We, as you heard from principals and as you heard from teachers, there are many teachers and I think some board members have been contacted by teachers who have been excited to return. The opposite side of that, parents who are excited to return, even some students who have emailed and called, who have shared that they are also excited to return. And so with those pieces, we are trying to balance meeting all the needs. We have some teachers who live in rural areas without broadband who have great difficulty with remote. We also have some students in that space. We know that in our county, we have a variety of professionals that are going to work every day and they are meeting the needs of members of the community who are greatly relying on them. Health professionals and other service providers that are meeting those needs. And we are so thankful that they are there to meet those. Likewise, we know our students are greatly depending on us meeting their needs. Because we do not have broadband while remote is working for some, it is not working for all. Over the course of the time that we have been in remote, we have had some students that not only have had challenge with remote, but have had various tragedies in their home that we learned about later because they were unable to communicate remotely with us and until they came in person. Our school Quincy had such difficulty with remote learners. Teachers during remote came to the school and students were still bussed to the school during remote to meet their students because it just simply was not working for them. So when I say that we want to serve every student, we truly do in person. We'd like to do that for as long as possible. If we know that potentially a red rating by the county standards may well continue and that transmission may continue throughout January, February, and March. If we are not experiencing community spread in our schools, we would like, from what you've heard from the principals and from some parents and others, we would like to try to remain in school as long as we safely can serve students in school for as long as possible. This window of opportunity allowed us to open and begin serving. But from what you've heard from staff this evening, that's part of what we're hearing in addition to those that would prefer not. So we certainly hear both sides of that. I just want to close with that particular comment so that you understand why we opened. You know that our scorecard that is on our website that shows the red remote was at that time in October aligned to KSD. But even while it was aligned to KSD, it does say, and still said in October, that we will adjust along with KSD and the health guidelines. So we are still operating on that end. We hope to stay open for as long as we can safely serve students. And at this time, our principals feel that we can do that and we'd like to support that recommendation. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Mickelson on the fine arts and on any other item, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So it's not an action item, but is there any concern with the recommendation from the fine arts to allow safe outdoor fine arts activities that would over and above drum line in orchestra?
As long as the visiting team wears masks.
Okay. Are there any other concerns?
I totally agree. This should mirror athletics. I mean, we should not penalize our art students.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison.
Yeah, I'm very, very much in favor too for our fine and performing arts to proceed.
I see mostly unanimous nods of heads, so I think we're good to go with that recommendation.
Basketball players don't have to play outside, though.
Okay, next on the, our discussion item. So we have academic calendar, Mrs. Wallace.
Presented to you was on Board Docs, the 2021-22 academic calendar. This calendar was voted on by staff. And of the participating staff, 70% voted for this particular calendar. We presented two calendars to them. Some of the features of this calendar, I believe, that were popular with the staff were starting midweek on a Wednesday. That is important for elementary students and teachers not to start with a full week of school. It has the two weeks off at winter break, a week off in March for spring break. And then because the, one of our parameters that we have set historically is to try to be out before Memorial Day. And there is a long stretch between spring break and the end of the year. And because of the way the calendar failed this year, it allowed us to plan an additional day off in late April to kind of break up that timeframe. So those were some of the features, I think, that probably is why 70% voted. It also has the three days off at Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Wallace. As I serve on that committee and I appreciate your leadership there. It's never the same each year to year. Each year is different and fitting a two-week break into Christmas is always a challenge. And I appreciate the input you receive from their certified and classified staff. And it's a very efficient committee for those of you who serve on it next year. Next on the discussion item is changing the retirement savings paradigm for Topeka Public Schools. I think Mr. Minkie's gonna-
And Dr. Mickelson, I will say Mr. Minkie will make a quick comment. You received a 36-page PowerPoint today. And so he's going to give you time to read that. And at the next meeting, that's when we'll have the full discussion. Mr. Minkie just wants to make sure you know what you did receive. And then after the discussion in two weeks, then the action will happen after that. Mr. Minkie, did you have a sentence or two that you'd like to say, sir? Make sure we unmute you. It's been- We can hear you. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Yeah, just a few brief comments to introduce the topic of retirement savings plans and the district's role as an employer plan sponsor. An article in a recent benefits management publication titled "Plan Sponsors Can Do More to Improve Employee Retirement Readiness" starts out, "Many companies worry about their employees' long-term financial security, particularly are they saving enough for retirement? But surprisingly, few organizations or companies have built retirement plans that sufficiently address these challenges." Recent national studies indicate that 78% of employers feel responsible for helping their employees with sustaining assets through retirement, up from 33% in 2012. Employer concerns seem aligned with retirement plan participants. A 2019 survey conducted by the National Association of Financial Advisors found that 74% of employees participating in retirement saving plans would like a retirement savings plan do-over. Currently, we offer our employees pre-tax retirement savings accounts under multi-vendor platform. Our existing system provides limited assistance for employees to compare plans, investment fees, and measure performance. The multi-vendor platform often proves to be insufficient to the district when functioning as the employer plan sponsor and fiduciary. And as you mentioned, at our next board meeting on the 21st, we will share a detailed analysis and report on the district's current plan, providing detailed information on its deficiencies and provide recommendations for how we could help improve our district's employee retirement readiness. So looking forward to that on the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Minkie.
Yeah.
Well, I'll dig into that 36-page PowerPoint after the meeting, sure. So, thank you, Mr. Minkie.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is comments from board members. We'll start with Dr. Morrison.
I hadn't had time to get those comments, but I do want to say, and I do have it up, the change that Kansas State Board of Education talked about in their December meeting of 2020 about opening of schools. Multiple emails have said that we promised that if we were, if the county was in the red, we would close schools. And that's not the case, in my knowledge. So everything changes. I mean, just like Dr. Anderson said, from August to December, things are a whole lot different than what they were. And, you know, there are studies out there now that say kids do better in school. But we continue to be concerned about staff and the spread of staff. But staff can control that by when they go out in the county wearing masks, social distancing, and hand washing. But it appears, especially in the young kids, that there's not, there's not spread in the elementary schools. And that's why KSD has come up with the guidelines that they had. And we are following those guidelines. So I want to just comment to the people that are watching. I see we have 27 people that are on. And we have had multiple emails telling us that we promised in the red. Well, I don't think we ever promised, but things change. And we are definitely concerned. But we know, and we got discussion tonight from principals, that kids need to be in school. So I will just leave with that comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Dr. Bonebrake.
But meeting and seeing you all in person is delightful. And so 2021 can be great. Vaccinate, vaccinate, vaccinate. That's all I have.
Mr. Munoz.
Or a woman.
What I was going to say is, I think I'm, you know, worried about the county number. And I think there's lots of individuals who are worried about the county number, knowing that we are at 24. You know, and when we're making these decisions, there's a couple of different ways to do it. You can think of it almost as of, you know, surgery using a scalpel or an axe, right? One which is precise in where you're making small, you know, quick decisions. So as we use, using that sort of tool, when we're trying to decide what do we do going forward, you know, a scalpel might help us to make quick changes. And I think it's good because it also maximizes time their kids in school. Make sure that any chance there is for us to keep our kid in school, that they're in there. The unfortunate side of that is that it also comes with a lot of uncertainty for parents. It comes with a lot of uncertainty for teachers. And on the other hand, using an axe, where you use broad strokes, you know, it's great because it allows us to plan out well ahead. We know far out in advance when we're going to be in school and we're going to be out of school. And it creates certainty and a sense of ease among staff and families. The bad thing is that if we do that, there may be opportunities where kids could be in school and are not. So I think we have to balance our decision planning process. And I think it's completely natural for lots of individuals to feel stressed out because of a decision that has been made fairly quickly. And sometimes we just don't have enough time to make, and we have to make a call. Looking back and putting myself in that situation, I think knowing what the county and state says may be coming, who we may see a large amount of time being in red, it probably was the best decision. Even though I don't agree with it, I can see and I heard the value that comes for teachers and the value that comes for our, for our students who we're here to serve. But I do think that the more that we could do to try to plan this out, the better. I'm really worried about us still being in school while we're in 24. And I would like to see us begin to look at, you know, planning to, to potentially, if it were me, if I had, of course, I have just one of seven votes right on this board. But I'd like to, I don't know, looking at the numbers that we can afford to be out any more than two weeks at most with our kids in school before we have to be in a plan to be out because of our kids, but also our staff and community transmission. So I think that's, when you ask what's most resonating for me right now as a board member, the scorecard and trying to plan as best as we can to what's best for all teachers, families, and our students. So other than that, I hope everybody had a great holiday weekend. I think probably it was re-energizing for most of us, you know, given the kind of year that we've all had. And so I know I got a lot of rest and then came back with lots of energy to work and ready to get back to work here on the school board, so.
Mrs. Bowley.
One of the things I wanted to discuss as a board to put out there is we've never been in a pandemic before. But at the end of this, when we have everything going normal again, I think as a board, we need to sit down and talk about what we went through, what procedures or policies that we might need to put into place that can guide us if anything, God forbid, would happen like this again. We just examine that and think if there's anything that we can do to help guide us better. I want to also talk about how important school is to our community. It's just, this has shown us how important it is. And I just really want to thank our teachers for being so professional during this school year. I know it is so scary for some and so joyful for others when they see their kids and their students again. And I just want to really thank them for their professionalism for this. I have struggled with being supportive about returning to school at this time. But I can tell you, my emails are a balance of parents wanting their students in school, thinking that it's very healthy for their students to be in school. You heard that from the DCAC Committee tonight. They really feel it is important for their students. And that balance of our staff and keeping them safe and our students who are overjoyed to be there, jumping out of the car and realizing that school is important to them. And from pre-K all the way up through high school. I think it's really important that we understand that our data was moving down when we opened. It was our small window they'd be able to jump into. We need to really use this time to touch our students, catch them up, find out where their difficulties are. Make this just such a powerful time just in case those horrible numbers come at us and we're going to have to leave. And I know there are people who are disappointed in this decision. I, I know, I get your emails. But let's make this really powerful until we can't, until that's not possible for us to do it. Because I have a feeling our next stretch is going to be a long one without our students being with their most precious teachers. Let's make this powerful and let's just move forward the best we can.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Yes, I too have, have really struggled with this decision to be back in person. And I certainly recognize so many benefits, so, so much. And we know, we know our students do, do so much better in person. And at the same time, I want to also, I know many of our, all of our teachers want to be working with- all of our teachers want to be working with the students, with their students also in person. They know, they need that connection also. And at the same time, I want to validate the staff's and some parents' concerns about being in person during this terrible pandemic and at this high rating, although our internal card is low. So I want to remind people of that as well. But also, just really, I want to thank our staff, our principals, our teachers, all of our classified staff, our custodians. Just, you're amazing, and you really are heroes, and thank you. Thank you so much. And finally, I want to say that I'm really excited about this exploratory committee that has been formed to start researching the pros and the cons of a balanced calendar. So also known as year-round school. But I've learned that when we say year-round school, some people think that means adding more instructional days to the calendar, and it does not mean that. It means dividing up the vacation time so it's more balanced. And yeah, that's really what it means. So there's this committee that has, it's under the leadership, the very, very wise leadership of Ms. Wallace. And this committee is discussing, is just researching, basically. So I also want to stress for those who are listening that this is just exploratory right now. Nothing, no calendar is going to be changing anytime soon. We're just talking about all of the benefits and then any potential downsides to it. And what else? Tomorrow, Mr. Munoz and I will be going to Topeka High School. We've been invited to speak to a government class about public service. So I'm really looking forward to that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Williams stepped away just a few moments ago. He had another commitment. So just very briefly, I appreciate the theme of service to our students. It's been interspersed throughout the comments from our administration. We recognize we can serve them in many ways, whether it's in person or remote. It's easier to do it in person. We just want to do it safely, but I appreciate that regardless of how we do it, the goal and the energy displayed by our administration, our principals who spoke to us tonight. It's evident that their hearts are in the right place, and they want to just help our kids become better people and citizens. Also like to thank my colleagues on the board. It's especially Rich and Lalo and Sue and Melanie, because it's been a tough year. And we haven't had a lot of discussions other than COVID-related. And I wonder what we talked about before there was COVID. And I know we talked about something. I'm just not sure what it was. But I long for the days when we can get back to those. And I know we're working to get our teachers and staff vaccinated as quickly as we can in the order of events, and that will solve a lot of our concerns and worries, I think. So hopefully that can happen soon. And finally, just want to, if the DCAC is still listening, thank them again for their commitment and energy and dedication to our district and our students. I know Dr. Rautsong has been on the DCAC Committee for maybe a decade or more, serving in leadership roles in many of those years. And Dr. Gruder and Mr. Guile have also served violently. So I'm just appreciative of their effort. I know a lot of principals were attending in the meetings we had remotely this week. And so the energy of our district to support the DCAC is tremendous. So it serves us as a value-added sounding board. We get another opinions, and I'm appreciative of their time and commitment to our district. With that, that concludes my comments. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.